Nice. Good afternoon and welcome to the September 14th meeting of the Seattle Planning Commission. On behalf of the Planning Commission, we'd like to actively recognize that we are on indigenous land. The traditional and current territories of the Coast Salish people who have lived on and stewarded these lands since the beginning of time and continue to do so today. We acknowledge the role that traditional Western-centric planning practices have played in harming, displacing, and attempting to erase Native communities. We commit to identifying racist practices and strive to send a restorative land practice and land stewardship rather than unsustainable and extractive use of the land. So, welcome. All meetings of the Seattle Planning Commission are open to the public. However, as an advisory body, we do not hold public hearings. We provide recommendations to elected leaders who in turn make the actual decisions. We encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments to elected officials as appropriate. Today's is a hybrid meeting with some commission members participating remotely, as I am, while others are in person in the boards and commissions room at Seattle City Hall. Has Dalton joined us by chance?
Dalton has not yet joined us.
Okay. So, he was going to help us out by choosing one of our color-based norms that has particular relevance to today's agenda. I'm wondering if I have a volunteer such as, say, Michaela.
Absolutely. I am looking around and trying to figure out which one I want to pull out. Practice examining racially biased systems. Systems are what are left after all the people in this room leave. And I think, you know, systems drove the infrastructure that we're living with today and that the Seattle Transportation Plan is kind of trying to respond to and address some of the harms from systemic decisions and systemic racism that existed decades ago. And that's still around today. And I think that we have a challenge as a commission to examine racial bias as it relates to the Seattle Transportation Plan in our evaluation today. It challenged us.
Thank you. Very, very well done on the fly. And I appreciate your volunteering. If there aren't any amendments or modifications to these norms, then I suggest we agree to abide by them during our meeting. So on the agenda today, we have two items. Both are related to the draft Seattle Transportation Plan. First, the Planning Commission staff will walk through their proposed draft outline of our comment letter on the draft plan. Then staff from the Seattle Department of Transportation will provide an overview of the draft's environmental impact statement on the draft plan. But first, we need to approve minutes from our August 24th meeting. Can I get a motion in a second and then we can talk about any changes or amendments?
David, I'm sorry to interrupt. We do not have quorum at this time.
Okay, we can come back to that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Super. So, we'll come back to that later. The next upcoming meetings, the next Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting will be next Thursday, September 21st, at 7:30, from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. It will be held online using the MS Teams platform. And then our next full commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September 28th, also at 7:30, from 7:30 to 9:00 in the morning. And that one will be held both in person and via MS Teams. Vanessa?
Thank you, David. Just a few announcements. As David mentioned, this is a hybrid meeting. We have no members of the public attending or joining us in the boards and commissions room here in City Hall at this time, nor do we have anybody that we can see who's calling into this meeting. That could change. Just want to remind commissioners to please use the chat function to be recognized to speak, even those commissioners that are in the room. And that will help David and I facilitate the conversation. Well, it will help David facilitate the conversation and it will help me help David facilitate the conversation and make sure everybody has a chance to speak. Today does mark a transition for the commission as, perfect timing. Dalton just joined the call. Hi Dalton.
Everyone, how are you doing?
Doing well, thank you. I was just mentioning that today is a day of transition for us. As we say farewell, not goodbye, but as we say farewell and thank you to you and your service as a Get Engaged member for the last year. We're also welcoming Zio Alvarez, who is here in the room with us. The Get Engaged cohort will be officially appointed by City Council on Monday, so Zio is joining us pre-formal appointment, so she will not be voting on the minutes, but is welcome to participate otherwise. Both Dalton and Zio are participants in the city's Get Engaged program, which selects and places younger adults on a number of boards and commissions across the city. Get Engaged commissioners serve a year term beginning in the September of each year. Very appreciative Dalton of your participation over the past year and your active participation. And again, we're not saying goodbye. We are saying, hopefully, see you soon. With that, I'm going to ask David to start the introductions. After introducing yourself, please call on a fellow commissioner to introduce themselves. And please note if you were a previous Get Engaged participant prior to your current service. And then after all commissioners and staff have had a chance to introduce themselves, we'll give Zio a moment to introduce herself after we all have had an opportunity to let her know our names. So, start David, please.
Sure. David Goldberg, I'm the co-chair, and I use he/him pronouns. I live in the Wallingford Urban Village and work for the State Department of Transportation. And I'll pass it to my partner in crime, Michaela.
Michaela Dafford, she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill and I work in affordable housing policy and planning, and I'm from Chur, the Christian. I will pass it to Dalton.
Hey everyone, my name is Dalton Owen, pronouns he/him. I am a former Get Engaged member now, coming to the end of my term. Yeah, and I really appreciate y'all. Thank you. It's been a great time. And I'll pass my word to Nick.
Hello, Nick Woodball. I use he/him pronouns. I live in the West Seattle neighborhood. And for my day job, I work over at the City of Bellevue as a planner there. I'll pass it off to you.
Keep yourself muted. They should pick you up.
Okay. Andy Danenberg, he/him pronouns, live in northeast Seattle and I work part-time as faculty at the University of Washington, both in public health and in urban planning, and focus on health and built environment issues, so involved here in some of the public health aspects of planning. It's very exciting to be part of that. Is that all the commissioners? Who am I missing?
Caleb or Rose?
Okay, Rose.
Hey, I'm Rose Lucello, with him pronouns they/them. I live up north in the Lake Ten Springs neighborhood. And then for my day job, I'm a wetland biologist and permitting specialist with Jacobs Engineering. All right, Caleb.
Hi everyone, my name's Caleb Toolday, he/him pronouns. I live in the Central District and I work at Rainier Scholars doing leadership development work. Now I'll pass it off to, is it Zio that's left?
Yeah. Sweet.
Yeah, so you did hear. I'm Zio Alvarez, I use she/her pronouns. My day job is a staff designer at Element Architects and I sit in our urban design and architecture practice.
Welcome. My name's Vanessa Murdock. I use she/her pronouns. I'm staff to the commission. And Olivia.
Hey everyone, Olivia Baker. I use she/her pronouns and I'm also staff to the commission.
Hi everybody, John Hoy. I use he/him pronouns and I'm staff to the Planning Commission. Robin?
Robin McGonigal, live from Vashon Island. And I use she/her, they/them pronouns and I'm staff to the Planning Commission.
Thanks all for that round of introductions. And just noting in the chat that Caleb was a former Get Engaged member. So, we now have him for a full three years at least, so we're very fortunate. With that, I'll turn it back to you, David.
All right. So, before turning it over to Planning Commission staff to walk through the proposed outline of our comment letter on the SDP, I'd like to invite fellow commissioners to disclose any work they are or have been involved in on the SDP. Is anybody present who has worked on it?
David, I don't believe so. It occurred to me that Lauren Squires might have wanted to disclose the fact that her firm, not her firm, the firm she works at, Nelson Nygaard, is a consultant to the SDP, but she has not been directly involved for over a year. Unfortunately, Lauren is home with the flu, so she's not here today.
Well, bummer. So, then following the presentation, I will facilitate our discussion by first asking commissioners for any clarifying questions. If you don't have a question, feel free to pass, and I'll circle back to you at the end of the questions portion of our discussion in case something has occurred to you. And then following the questions, we'll open the floor to comments. Staff will assist in monitoring the queue and ensuring all commissioners have the opportunity to participate. We have an hour and 20 minutes for this agenda item. Today's discussion will inform the drafting of our comment letter on the draft plan.
I will take it away.
Take it away, John.
I do not want to be speaking for an hour and 20 minutes on this, but I look forward to hearing all of your comments. So just as a preface to my presentation, I do want to say we presented content on this last week at two separate committee meetings, at the executive committee meeting as well as the Housing and Neighborhoods Committee meeting. We had good discussion at both. I appreciate everybody's insights and comments. And then I also appreciate people that were able to send me some ideas, some reactions, some impressions, some comments on the draft Seattle Transportation Plan that they would like to see included in the outline. I have done my best to incorporate all of those from last week's meetings, the comments I received online. If you don't see anything you sent me, that doesn't mean I don't have it in my notes somewhere. But as you all have seen in the draft outline, it is already very long as an outline. And an outline is not meant to be all-inclusive at this point. We do want today's discussion to be first reactions, first impressions, hopefully generate some discussion about some good things that you like in the draft plan. We're a little short on that right now. I do have some comments up at the front of the outline about things that we are positive about, but I think the letter would benefit overall from a little bit more of the things that we do appreciate and thanking SDOT for all their work on this. I am also very open to ideas on consolidating, rearranging, et cetera, et cetera. So, today I think is a really good opportunity for that first discussion on the outline. I had one other thing I wanted to say. Julio just joined us in person. Okay, so maybe we'll get into it. Okay, next slide, please. So, I do want to start just with a reminder of our timeline for this project. We are now launching into overlapping comment letters on the draft Seattle Transportation Plan and the draft EIS. So, it's a little busy on our timeline. So, here we are today at the September 14th full commission. We are talking both about the draft comment letter outline as well as we're having a presentation from SDOT later this afternoon with an overview of the draft environmental impact statements. At next Tuesday's executive committee meeting, we will have a discussion on commissioners' initial, sorry, it'll be initial staff comments on the draft EIS and then opportunity for commission discussion on the draft EIS. Next Thursday at the Land Use and Transportation Committee, we will have an opportunity to provide additional discussion and for commissioners to provide additional details and ideas on how to flesh out both the draft SDP and the DEIS comment letter outlines. Then, two weeks from today, we will be at the point where we will be able to review and discuss staff draft letters on both the draft SDP and the DEIS. There's a lot going on. And then October 5th, we will be moving forward with final comments on both of those letters. And then the goal, the end of all this, is to approve final letters on both the draft SDP and the DEIS on October 12th. That is a Thursday afternoon full commission meeting. All of this is intended so that we meet the comment deadlines for both the draft SDP as well as the draft EIS. And we are on track as of today. That's the good news. Okay, let's get into it. So, if you've had the chance to take a look at the draft outline, you'll notice it is, at this point, 17 sections, nine pages as an outline. Luckily, the good news about, the reason why we do these outlines is to provide the structure and hang a lot of the initial content onto the outline. So, this is not simply high level. It has a lot of good content already within the outline. So, I think it provides good structure. But as I mentioned before, there may be opportunities for consolidation or rearranging. I'm looking forward to hearing from you. So, we start off with an introductory section. We get into some general comments. That's more kind of our overall impressions of the document. We have a section on goals and performance measures. We have a section on integration of modal plans, that we get into the prioritization framework comments, comments on implementation. All of those are new since we presented the review framework over the last few meetings. Most of those sections are new. And then you'll see the sections that we have been discussing for quite a while. Racial and social equity, transportation choices. And then we get into a new section that came up out of the discussion last week, multi-lane arterials. Then access to daily essential needs, safety and vision zero, great mobility, climate change and resilience, repurposing the right-of-way, anti-displacement, integration with the comprehensive plan, and lastly, regional coordination. So, like I said, it is quite a long outline with a lot of sections. What I'm going to do today is, rather than provide an overview of the content of all of the content within the outline, I'm going to highlight some of the new comments that came out of the discussions, both at the executive committee last week as well as the Housing and Neighborhoods Committee and the ones that I received by email later in the week. So, you hopefully will not see a lot of redundancy from everything I presented last week, which was a lot. But all of that is still in the outline. And so, but most of what I will present today is new content. I think I have something like 16 slides. We might take a break halfway through it, just so I can take a breath. But let's go ahead. Okay, so as I mentioned, the introduction is really meant to just kick off the letter and give some initial impressions. So, we do want to make sure right up front that we want to commend SDOT for their unprecedented community engagement and outreach efforts for this project. We have some additional comments. There are also some subbullets in the outlines which I didn't include in this high-level presentation. We do want to acknowledge that we do support the plan's vision. The draft SDP is a 20-year vision for the future of Seattle streets, sidewalks, and public spaces informed by thousands of people who live, work, and play in Seattle. And we have acknowledged that the draft SDP generally considers the priorities that the commission has identified as needed for the future of transportation in Seattle, including equity, safety, climate, and others. Just as for some general comments that don't really fit within any specific section, we do want to acknowledge there have been comments from commissioners that digesting the information in this plan has been very challenging. And we have some subcomments on that. The comment that the plan should include a glossary for the overall document, not just each individual plan. There are many new and sometimes vague terms that are introduced in the document. There was a comment about graphics. It seems like every comment letter, we have some comment about graphics and the look of the document. Almost all of the photos included in this draft are beautiful and sunny and dry days. And in reality, this is really Seattle. Not only, though, I mean, we could have more representative photography that highlights the problems of our transportation system and Seattle's weather conditions. And we do in fact have rainy, snowy days and what needs to change on those days, as well as how the transportation system can accommodate to extreme heat or smoky days. So, just something to consider. Go ahead. Getting into, so these are new comments on goals and performance measures. There was a comment that the overarching comment of the plan includes ambiguous goals that hinder bold and ambitious policy. The Planning Commission is interested in seeing metrics and targets, including how to account for different outcomes and policies. There was a comment that the performance measures identified in the plan are poorly defined and asking what is the baseline that everything will be measured against. Another comment that the performance targets are listed literally as TBD and asking when can we expect those targets to appear? Next. More on goals and performance measures. The comment that the plan does not provide readers with a simple way to look at the existing versus proposed miles of infrastructure improvements by the various types of transportation. And then a comment that a useful graphic would show how SDOT proposes the multimodal network to be built out. And there are some additional details in the outline on some of those. As far as, there were many comments about the integration of modal plans that was promised, that the commission is in fact disappointed by the plan's inability to fully integrate the modes and that the interconnections in the plan across modes are not always easy to follow. And it is not apparent how layering these elements results in a comprehensive one Seattle transportation strategy. And that, there was a comment, a positive comment, that the draft SDP's network integration guidance process graphic in Part 2 on page 16 is a useful first step. That could be, that could be a stepping off point for what we are looking for. Couple of comments on the prioritization framework that that they are in fact looking for input on prioritizing, how to prioritize future projects, that the draft plan does not include a prioritization framework, was a comment. And there is mention of catalyst projects, but the comment was, we need a clearer definition of what those catalyst projects are in order to understand how these projects will be prioritized.
John, sorry to interrupt, but do you want to take everybody a couple of minutes to look at the, review the outline?
We talked about that.
If that would be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I'll admit that I did not have time to read it since I received it.
Sure. Yeah, we, thanks for the reminder, Vanessa. We did say that. We can provide five minutes. I did just email it to you all again. So you should have it at the top of your inbox and five minutes might be helpful. A lot to take in.
I saw outline and I was like, oh, it'd be two pages.
Not hard.
No.
Okay, that was that was five minutes. Sorry, I forgot that at the beginning. Hopefully you've had, hopefully that was helpful. I would prefer just to keep going through the outline and then we can have a discussion and jump to various sections where that might be helpful. We finished this slide, so let's go on to okay, implementation. An overarching comment, the planning commission is concerned about pragmatic implementation of this plan. We would like to understand how ESTA is intending to implement the STP vision in an incremental fashion over time for each element. We would like to see a clear framework for prioritizing input with equity. And we would like to see more clarity around results-based accountability in the decision-making process to ensure not just those with access to power are heard when trade-offs are made. So those are the new topics that we did not have in our review framework originally. These these topics from here on, with the exception of one, have been in our review framework. So you've seen these topics, but I'm only including new comments that came out of the discussion last week. So under racial and social equity, there was a comment that the discussion of vulnerable communities in the plan does not sufficiently include those with disabilities or limited mobility. And another comment that every citywide map or figure of transit networks should include the racial and social equity composite index as the background and in clear clear symbology between existing and proposed connections. So we can see clearly where exactly see clearly where exactly investments are proposed to be made relative to the racial and social equity index. Few more new comments under racial and social equity. There was a comment that commissioners are disappointed to not see economic development as a goal within the draft SCP with notes that all businesses depend on convenient transportation and will thrive if mobility choices are based on both efficiency and convenience. With call out, there is a a comment on page 68 mentions that more than 80% of Black and Indigenous survey responders want to prioritize a transportation system that supports a strong economy. Next slide. So this is a new section that was recommended on multi-lane arterials. With an overarching comment that the plan should articulate and illustrate a comprehensive integrated strategy for multi-lane arterials. This overall strategy should draw from each element to show how multi-lane arterials will be transformed, show how modes will be integrated to increase transit speed and reliability, eliminate deaths and serious injuries, expand people streets for high-population areas, ensure a complete and safe bike network, and allow for safe passage of fruit. With a question about how will parking policies change to allow for these strategies to occur? More detail on multi-lane arterials. There was a recommendation to use maps to show and prioritize the collision-prone locations according to the equity framework and safety ranking. Identify speed reduction strategies for corridors in high-population areas with limited green space, identify and prioritize opportunities for people streets, green stormwater infrastructure, and increase vegetation, which are critical for safety, equity, climate action, and livability. Show the modal integration moves for each corridor, accommodate electric vehicle charging if there is also parking, and address health considerations such such as emissions from single-occupant vehicles on arterials. The safety and Vision Zero section had quite a few comments with one overarching comment being that the Vision Zero strategy should be a separate element with its own comprehensive strategy for getting to zero deaths by 2030 or an updated target with express moves to get there. This this element should include a strategy to implement speed reduction measures and track progress on speed humps, curb bulbs, speed limits, effectiveness of enforcement, elimination of slip lanes and high-speed turns, leaving pedestrian intervals, no ride-on red, and other tactics. And lastly, the plan should include priority projects to meet the urgency of the city's Vision Zero goals. One more comment under safety. The that the plan's maintenance and modernization goal feels like it is missing explicitness around the nuance of past transportation planning decisions resulting in ongoing harm, as was brought up during the norms earlier in the meeting. The plan refers to the transportation equity framework, but ESTA should explicitly explicitly acknowledge that the part of the framework should be considering when to maintain versus when to remove or reroute networks to repair harmful past decisions. There was some new content added in the climate change and resilience section where we said the plan must include strategies aimed at addressing air quality emissions, heat, island tree canopy, stormwater flows, flooding, et cetera. New comments stated that the climate section does not sufficiently address extreme heat. And there was a recommendation to reword climate action key move number two to strengthen and be explicit by changing it to to better handle extreme heat and increased storm event intensity in a changing climate. A comment that the STD should include other ways to increase environmental sustainability and climate resilience in communities beyond just increasing tree canopy and to include green infrastructure in parts of the city where development is not already planned. Few more things under climate change and resilience. The concept of electrification of the citywide transportation network is intriguing but should not be prioritized with a few additional comments. A recommendation to de-emphasize climate action key move number four about electrification and instead move up climate action number five about mode shift. Strategies for electrification of the transportation network should prioritize charging for underserved, low-income, and BIPOC communities. And lastly, the planning commission wants to learn more about the development of a low-emissions neighborhoods pilot program to improve air quality, mobility, and community health. Under the repurposing the right-of-way section, a few additional comments. The people streets section does not reflect the shift that we experienced during the pandemic. And the plan would benefit from a map of streets that should be closed to cars. And while there is a lot of verbiage in the curbside management section by techniques for regulating parking, there does not appear to be policy guidance vis-à-vis parking in relation to all the other elements. For example, parking is not addressed in the transit element, although it has been the primary obstacle to expanding transit lanes. I think this is our last substantive section. Under integration with the comprehensive plan, there are a few additional comments that the STP implementation plan will need to align with the anticipated travel demand generated by the selected growth strategy in the in the conference plan and its associated land use patterns. Population and job density targets will be necessary to determine if the STP implementation strategy matches the growth strategy that is selected. And that the STP should recognize that the pandemic fundamentally shifted our commuting patterns. And lastly, it will be necessary to answer the question, is our transportation network complete enough to support the future number of people in each neighborhood as we grow? That's it for that's my overview of the outline, the additions that have have been generated over the last week or so. You have the whole document. I'm think we're going to open the floor.
Clarifying questions first, and the list, the queue is in the chat. Julio, you're in there. And then after clarifying questions, we'll move into comments. And I'm seeing that Rose, Michaela, Nick, and Caleb have all passed. So I think that leaves Andy, Dalton, Julio, Matt.
I have some comments, but I don't think they're all best questions. I'll wait for comments. No question.
Then I think that just leaves us with Dalton and Matt. Matt is joining us on the phone and he has poor internet. So he may not be able to. Matt, if you have a clarifying, if you have a question, please either pop it in the chat or and I'll read it aloud or or pass. And Jamie has also given this, so. And she has no clarifying questions.
I think it's time to start putting your name in if you have comments. So we can get that portion going. While people are thinking about whether they want to comment, John, thank you very much for tracking all this and for putting it all together. That is such a huge help. I I don't know whether we want to do this today or what point we want to do it, but it seems what an important thing to do. It strikes me that there are things that are really, I think, are probably really important to us that are various places throughout the outline. And that there's some things that could probably be consolidated. So it'd be, you know, as we usually do with these kind of long comment letters, we'll want to bullet our main our, you know, our main concerns up up top. So it'd be good if we were sort of figured out a way to know that we're all on the same page about what those are. I'm going to see that Michaela has a comment.
I always have something to say. I was thinking for from a consolidation perspective, the economic development comments that are right now in the equity and social justice section. Could they live in a comment around the 15-minute city? Like, does not the 15-minute city in a way promote economic development, making sure you have access to your daily needs within close proximity of your house? And therefore sort of advance a key survey finding from BIPOC communities that that was quoted in the report, just thinking. I don't I don't always love when we segment out equity and social justice stuff into like its own category. And I like to think about how we integrate it into the why of our other statements. So just, I'd be happy to help find another home for that statement.
And you had a comment about Vision Zero?
Oh, yeah, actually, that's I do, but come back to me after everybody else has had a chance to participate.
Okay, Andy?
I have a series of comments, but I'll give a few and come back more when you want more. Um, one was, can you go back to either your first or second slide that talked about those streets and sidewalks?
Streets and sidewalks are probably under the
It was what the overall mission or goal or something was.
Well, there was, yeah, the first slide had the vision
Yeah, the vision.
For the whole plan.
Yes. Yeah, that is surprising. Transit is not in that sense.
Yeah. Good. Well, like that.
Okay, because it's a just jumped out. We're not just streets and sidewalks. And it doesn't really capture biking, walking, except implicitly. It just sort of bothered me on how it was capturing the mobility.
Are we talking about B?
Yeah, B. I'm looking at B.
I think they're intentionally describing the infrastructure that moved the buses, that moved the pedestrians. I think that they're focused on the space that they have authority over in that sentence.
So is this going to be what they can't? I guess what's really on my other question is how do they work with other agencies that they don't have direct? Is this only what they can do, anything that's outside that is transportation outside of their authority shouldn't be in there? Or should it say, and we will work with agencies such and such because this is really transportation that we already is is elsewhere. So I mean, sound transit moves like rail, but the idea is the transportation plan for the city and not mention the parts of transportation.
Right. I think it's a plan for the streets, the sidewalks, and the public spaces that constitute what's within
Within there, right.
And then, okay.
The fact that it's labeled the transportation plan for the city and then ignores parts of transportation, it's not their jurisdiction, because that's what's bothering me.
Okay.
And about this. And this is some something about coordinating with the other authorities that they don't control because that needs to be part of overall transportation. Does that make sense? Missing part of transportation is calling self-love transportation.
Andy, if I can, if you can comment. Typically, the way I I think of a vision statement, and this is literally at the top of the document. Usually I think of a vision statement as kind of like reading the headlines in a newspaper. It's kind of like, this is what we're striving for.
Right.
And this is a 600-page document. So this is really just a short, pithy acknowledgement of what is included in the draft plan.
Yeah, yeah. Right. And so, but this is not, this isn't actually the sentence that that is a vision. This is saying that the draft SDP in some is a vision. Supporting the vision is not, this is not the part that we support necessarily. We'd want to find some language from visionary language that is more what we really care about. I'm just not trying to describe what this draft is. Let's move on from this one if we if we can. Let's go. Let's go to, let's go to Nick.
Okay, good.
I appreciate and second the comments on the climate action. Just want a little stronger language around that. And I think it kind of relates in my mind to the 15-minute city. More lofty goals of decarbonization and using the 15-minute city as kind of a model for decarbonization at a community scale, which I think would be really important. So figuring out how to kind of tie that in with some of our climate action, I think would be helpful. And then I know we were looking for some positives. I I do think, you know, some of the biggest challenges with decision-makers is helping, you know, facilitate some constructive conversations. And a lot of people really rely on visuals or examples in one area that I think And one area that I think was helpful was, it was in the, I think in the transit portion, table six. It describes kind of potential streets that could have a different kind of mode application. And then there were precedent images from other cities. And I think what would be interesting with that graphic, how you could potentially take it further is layering in. I love the idea of looking at equity and, and justice kind of as an integrated approach. So it'd be interesting just to map the locations that S dot is providing as potential examples where the street applications could apply and overlaying that with areas that have historically less investment in infrastructure. Because a lot of the street examples that were provided appear to be for those destination streets. You're getting Broadway, you're getting parts of downtown, you're not seeing, this is in Del Ridge, for example. Or either. So it would just be interesting to see kind of how, how that is layering with, again, kind of the racial, social, I believe. I'll stop there for now.
Thanks, Nick. Rose?
Hey, so I just wanted to respond to Michaela's thoughts about consolidating the comment about economy and with the 15 minute city. And I actually disagree with that because when I think about the economy and I think about like, what makes businesses tick, I think about who gets left behind when we think about a 15 minute city. So like all your folks working in industrial areas, people whose companies are like, whoo, Seattle's too steep of a place to have rent. No way are we going to have like an operation in city of Seattle and then it like forces people to commute. So I'd actually argue that needs to be a standalone or put somewhere else that recognizes that 15 minute city does not work for all workers. And that perhaps the better way to emphasize a strong economy is to emphasize rapid transit. That's integrated with our regional network. So just, just a thought.
I'm definitely willing to, I agree with your perspective. Thank you.
Julio?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to compare or contrast my comment to Michaela. Because I really like the idea or the suggestion of having in each map a part that addresses the components of people of color and the amount of investment that has been done in that particular area. So whether we go with one or the other, I really would not want that to get lost or to be diluted. I like the opportunity to just have a clear picture of whether or not particular areas are being taken care of when it comes to investment. And by areas, I mean like geographical areas.
Does anybody else have a comment? I find it hard to believe that this group doesn't have a lot of comments, but I know this is a lot to, to, to digest. So Andy, did you have more that you wanted to get to?
Yeah, Michaela, before we go ahead.
Oh, please.
Okay. Um, one that would be in editing the comments overall, wording them to be as action oriented as possible. And the example, this is not actually in there. If you say, you know, make it more fair and equitable, doesn't really say what to do, but change some wording from one thing to another does. So it would be a matter of, I guess, staff going through in the editing part to see how many of them can be more specific into what you would like the wording or what you would like them to do rather than just, you know, pick something without suggesting how to do it. And I saw a few examples in some of your slides that were at that level of vagueness that could, could be more specific.
I noticed that as well. And I think the ones that are going to be more actionable for us or other people to pick up and move forward are those that start with like, the plan should blah, 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 like what, we can criticize what we don't like, but I think providing an alternative of what you should do is, is equally as powerful and helpful, I think, for decision makers.
Or specific wording.
Yeah. Um, but my, my comment, wait, I'm calling on myself. Sorry, David.
Yeah, Michaela.
My comment around Vision Zero is, I was like, wait a minute. Are you saying they didn't address it well enough? Because they, I remember that they started out the first section on safety with like Vision Zero and like the first or the second sentence, how can that be? And then I went back and did a word search and it shows up a whole 13 times in a 600 page document. And so if it's sort of like central and key, I, I agree that there's not enough emphasis placed on it. But I, I question whether or not we do it a disservice to actually achieving Vision Zero goals and we pull it out only as its own standalone chapter or element. Simply because I think the fixes are, are related to other components that are in the plan. And so happy to have a standalone one if that's where we feel like we need to articulate specific things that don't belong elsewhere and we want to cross-reference other parts of where it needs to go. But if there is anybody out here who, I'm not a careful follower of Vision Zero, but I don't own a car. And so I have a really firsthand perspective of doing a lot of walking in the city, so I care about it. But if anybody feels like they know a lot about it, I would appreciate someone doing a review for making sure that the plan's really setting us up for success. And David, maybe you've already done that with the comments you sent, John. I don't know. But thank you for elevating that. I appreciate it. Glad to see it.
Thanks. Nick, and then I will add some thoughts.
So on, it's on page 129, there is an example where we have a little stronger language, I think would be good for us to just pull.
129 of which part?
Uh, it's part two, it's like two dash 16, but it's transportation policy T 2.1 or 2.8. And it really provides more directive. It's, it's calling to implement a transportation permission of strategies to encourage. So it's being a little more explicit with the language as to what are we needing to do rather than, you know, the softer language of consider or study or evaluate. It's really more of a directive. So I do agree that where we want to provide feedback on what's most important, stronger language like implement is going to be important. And we have some example of that in the plan. And then the other comment that I had, I'm still, I'm having a hard time to some extent understanding kind of a street's role in the network without having kind of full picture of a land use context. And I think it's just the timing of the periodic update with the STP. But just, you know, wanting to figure out how, how maybe you can overcome that with the timing. And it's more just throwing it out. I don't have.
Change the timing. I mean, I don't.
The timing is one, that's the easy answer, but I don't think that's maybe politically possible answer.
Why not?
Yeah.
Like, why does this have to be done?
Ahead of.
Yeah.
So. Hey, sorry, I'm not putting myself in the chat, but since people are free conversing, I think Radcliffe mentioned in a previous meeting that it has to do with the timing for the transportation levy. And if they don't have a plan, they can't put out the vote to voters for a transportation levy. So I think it has to do with some fiscal pressure.
That's helpful. Is the levy on the ballot next year? Okay, yeah, that does make sense.
And the levy conclude, the current levy move Seattle concludes, like they're, they're going through the drenches of it.
Okay.
Cap out.
That, that list is going to be done before this plan is, is finalized. So. Yeah, I mean, so I'm going to shift to my, my comments. And so that would be one of the, you know, and I'm sort of scanning this for what do we really want to call out is what's most important to the planning commission kind of thing. It's phrased as integration with the comp plan, but really the comp plan should, the comp plan policy should be driving a lot of what this, this plan does. So I remain really concerned that, you know, that there's, the part, the parts where they're talking about land use, they're referring to a, a growth strategy that we've criticized and that we plan to move on from. And so I think that's a problem. And so I think as the commission, that may be one place where we really want to lean hard. You know, when I think about things that, that go together, at least in my mind, when we, when we say that the, one of our big issues with this plan is that it was set out to be an integration of the modal plans. And when it's all said and done, it looks like the modal plans have just been stapled together and you can't really easily anyway, without flipping back and forth a lot, get a handle on what it is that we've done to integrate in the places that really triggered this, which is, which is, as I noted in my comments by email, the arterials. That's the place where all these, these multi-lane arterials are the places where all these conflicts happen. And that's the reason why I, I call it out. So when we're talking about the, you know, the, we're not sure about the, the integration and the prioritization, et cetera, that that's, that is a lot of where the issues are. So I think, I mean, I just would like to see a whole lot more policy clarity about, about how they're going to solve these or at least approach these thorny issues. And if you're not going to talk about parking in the context of transit lanes, you're not talking about the thorny issues and you're not making any progress in resolving those issues. So that's, that's why I think that arterial strategy is so important and it's part and parcel of the whole, the whole issue with integration. So those can be consolidated and I would hope moved up as a point of emphasis. And I do, you know, I'm not seeing exactly how an emphasis on equity shifts the prioritization. I would, I would love to see at least some, you know, near term, so they don't, they can't maybe game it out all the way through the 20, 20 years, but for the first five year tranche, what does that look like? What goes first if we're repairing past harms? What kinds of projects rise to the top? I would like to see a whole lot more explicit illustration of that. And so, you know, I think I've taken a lot of airspace, sorry. But I think those are, those are the, some of the things anyway. And the other, the other thing I wanted, one I kind of wanted to make was that there are, there's, there's some really big moves that, that address, that you can look at and say, these do the most for probably for equity, for saving lives, for growth and economic development, for adapting to the climate, for livability. And I think when we can point to those multi-level wins or the, or the areas that really need to be addressed in a cohesive way to get, to do all that, I think we can avoid kind of fragmenting to, fragmenting so much to say, well, and on climate XYZ, on equity XYZ. Anyway. Uh, see, there's things happening in the chat here. Who, who, who next? Rose?
I think so, uh, because I'm responding in part to your ideas. And I was wondering if maybe a suggestion we could make is that S dot, that, that also may address integration of the modes that S dot come up with some scenarios to illustrate how prioritization frameworks would happen. So you know, like in areas of a lot of small businesses, like maybe the priority is, you know, installing load zones. So there's like safe ways for all traffic to integrate or whatever, or maybe the priority is transit. But I think if there's some concrete examples, like by land use type, that it might help hold together what a prioritization framework would be. And, and then I also was kind of wondering if, I really feel for S dot. Cause we keep saying equity first, equity first means co-creating with community. You have to do that before anything. And then here we are trying to propose like, you need to do XYZ, even though they've been trying to say, our plan says co-create with communities. Or at least that was like one of the reads I, I took from it. So I would actually maybe give them a little grace on that front. But in a way that still tries to highlight, you know, what, what the plan is missing.
Well, I'm just going to respond to that real quick. To me, that, that co-creating thing, okay, we've gotten a lot of public input and we know what a lot of people are looking for. And we've been, and when it comes to a corridor like Rainier, for example, we've got so much input over so many years about what the issues are. And so we know we need to slow the speeds down. We know we need to speed transit through there. It would be great if we, you know, had a lot, a lot more frequent and better crossings, et cetera. We know that those are solutions that kind of need to happen. They've risen up for the community many, many times over many years. So the co-creating part to me is, you know, when you're down to, okay, well, what is it actually going to look like in this section versus that section? Then you're trying to work at that out on a more fine-grained level with folks. I, I kind of think, because I think the, the main issues have risen up time. And again, they just haven't been addressed. Let's see, Michaela, you were next?
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna riff off of that as well. I'm, I love that you're doing the trust fall road with the city, but I am so much more cynical than that. I read that statement and I noticed it didn't say with the vulnerable communities, it's a co-create with community, which gives the city the cover to say, well, we heard from a lot of stakeholders. And at the end of the day, we're still going to make the decision that, that doesn't necessarily prioritize the folks who are typically left out in these decision-making. Who are the ones coming and saying like, I want Rainier Avenue to be a safer place and yet we still can't make it happen. So, you know, the comment I made last week is I, you know, these are really, really awesome goals and objectives. But brass tacks implementation, I've seen time and time again, business community, people worried about losing parking. Like when you've got a bunch of different goals that are in conflict with one another. S dot doesn't have a, a strong track record of really trying to prioritize the unpopular outcomes. And you know, like in the work of what, what folks in the community are asking for. So I just remain concerned about that. But that was my critical feedback. David and other, other folks who work in transportation, I would love to hear from you what you like about the plan. Cause I think, I think staff asked us to provide some additional commendations if they exist. And I, and I'm curious if we're folks thinks the plan, where they've done a good job and we should be calling that up.
Um, well, I, I think there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of aspirational language in the plan that we, that I think we, we, we can totally get behind. And, you know, they, they, you know, for the first time, we're, we're talking, we are talking about public space on our right away. And I think we're, you know, putting some emphasis on, on safety. It has risen up and it does come up a lot, at least in the sort of overarching comments. You know, I do think, I think they did, they did draw a line from the community outreach they got to many of their aspirational statements about what this plan is about. And I don't really object to most of that stuff at all. What I, what I worry about is that I, when it gets down to the specific plan part of it and the, here's really what, how, what we're going to prioritize and what particular corridors look like as a result, that's the part where I get a little squeamish. So sorry, I, you know, I had, I gave you a yes, but.
Well, and I knew, I, we, we know that that's sort of the trend that we stopped coming out of our comments. That's no surprise.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just helpful for somebody like me who doesn't live in transportation day in, day out to see other perspectives on what's good about the plan. But don't we want them to change?
Vanessa?
Thanks, David. So one thought I had that I wanted to put out for all of your consideration is as you, with our support, with staff support, draft these comment letters, think about what you would like S dot to address between the draft and the final. And an example could be, we look forward to the companion implementation framework to better understand how you are going to translate these aspirational goals into priority decisions. You know, we are, as, as stewards of the comprehensive plan, the planning commission is very interested, has struggled with reviewing this plan absent the land use patterns that are being proposed in the, in the soon to be released comprehensive plan. And we look forward. the land use patterns that are being proposed in the, in the soon to be released comprehensive plan. And we look forward to the revised plan reflecting those land use patterns and really kind of direct, you know, after saying all the nice things or few nice things, really to, to building off Andy's point, to be really actionable and in your, as you finalize the plan and review all the, the comments, consider XYZ or do XYZ. So that was just a thought. And also there's, I can't remember where it is, but a lot of their baseline in the tables that are in the several hundred page, part two of the document, there's a lot of TBDs. And if you all have thoughts on how those TBDs are going to be deemed, are going to be determined, your comment letter would be a great place for, for that. And it would be action, more actionable than, than we don't see an implementation plan. So I think S dot could come back and say, well, plans don't have a implement, implementation isn't part of plan. The plan is just what we want to see happen. So therefore an implementation framework companion document would be very helpful. So just my blah blah thoughts.
I, I actually think they address that. I don't, I don't think that's the point you were trying to make, but I think they actually have like an interesting approach to the implementation strategy where they basically said, we know we need to do one and we're going to do one between now and the draft and we're going to work with the community to do that. I don't know if I remembered that correctly. The big document, but.
Some notes on that, I think at the end of part one.
Yeah. So we could, we could talk about how we're looking forward to seeing that and how we appreciate that they didn't want to rush to design without consulting with folks on what actually matters.
Andy?
Um, Ben, a different topic, are the more things you want to put on on this part?
Yeah.
Okay. Just, um, does the term complete streets appear anywhere in there? And if not, it might be an appropriate kind of goal for when they're talking about integrating the plans. Does anyone know of that? Here?
Definitely mentioned a few times. I think they refer to it a lot in reference to their Streets Illustrated document, which is sort of a tangential document that S dot operates off of, that they know they plan to update. And so, yeah, they mentioned the complete streets model as one of their strategies.
Cause I'm, I'm thinking with the comment we had on that they didn't do much about mode integration, we could add a comment saying part of mode integration is following their principles of complete streets, just to have it near that comment.
Yeah, appears to be mentioned once in the whole part two, based on a quick word search.
The problem with the word searching is that the document is unfortunately not searchable for most of it. If you were in search, a lot of it doesn't come up unless you have a, a computer powerful enough to OCR that whole document, which mine is not.
That's maybe why I saw that.
Yeah. So we're searching deeper part two, I will say.
Maybe they should change that. So it's actually searchable.
I mean, it seems to be working on the PDF that I have. I don't, I don't know. Maybe it's not the whole document. Let's see. Anybody else?
Throw in one more thing?
Sure.
Um, does safe routes for school, safe routes to school appear anywhere and should it as a?
I think they also, an interesting thing to note is that they also talk about creating programs to do safe routes to parks and.
Okay, safe routes to major destinations.
Yeah, which aren't existing programs, but once they find it.
Anyone else? So John, what, um, what will we do from here on this outline?
So Olivia, can you go to the next steps slide? So the next, the next obvious steps are, so next, um, next Tuesday, we're going to be focusing more on the DEIS at the executive committee, but at the, um, at next Thursday's land use and transportation committee, we will have additional discussion on the status of the outline. That's a probably the next opportunity to provide additional feedback. Uh, I will work on revisions to the outline and to incorporate comments from today as well as any additional comments. If you have some, feel free to send them to me, but that would be the next opportunity for robust discussion on the outline. And then after that, we will need to start turning this into a letter. So, um, I appreciate all the comments today. I think there's some really good suggestions and I think you've helped my thinking on how to make the letter a little bit more impactful and concise.
That's good to hear. Cause I often think our discussions, uh, may not necessarily help you that way, but that's really good to hear.
Well, that's, that's me being the, that's me being the, the optimistic leader of this process.
I mean, I, I do, I, I do think that we flagged some things that maybe might be a little bit helpful. So Vanessa, since you're typing, maybe you want to speak?
I was just, thank you, David. I was just noticing the time and noticing that Radcliffe, uh, Dakine from S dot will be joining us in about a little bit over 15 minutes. And so, um, one thought of what to do with the rest of the time before he joins is to take that balance of time to brainstorm those high priority sort of top of letter issues that you referenced earlier, David, like the, the bulleted list of issues that we like to, or that has been our practice to put at the top of the letter before getting into the, the nitty gritty in subsequent pages. We've touched on a few. I, I can go back through my notes for reading them through. But that would help, I think, and John, I'm speaking on behalf of John, so tell me if I'm wrong. That would help John start to craft the letter in terms of organization.
Yeah, whatever we can do to help. So the Alan, you presented it, it meant the salary, the organization that you propose?
It's, um, it is so far, but it's certainly open for consolidation, reorganization. For example, I heard David say loud and clear, the arterials section should be moved up and I don't disagree with that. It just so happened that's where it was placed for now. I really like this idea and that's, um, I appreciate the, the idea of if we can come up with maybe some top, some high profile categories that you really want to focus on. I would certainly be open to that.
Do we, Jamie's suggesting maybe give ourselves a few minutes to, to stretch and have a bio break and then maybe jump back into that or do that when we're all done with this, how do folks feel? Take a quick break? All right. Why don't we take a break till four 30 and then we'll come back and, and use that 10 minutes to see if we can help John flag a few of our other top priorities.
I think I'm due to, yes.
All right.
Well, I mean, that could be a comment too, that they need to put it in.
Okay. Radcliffe indicated he would be joining us around four 35, but he's on the agenda at four 40. So we do have 10 minutes.
Okay. Well, perfectly, if we're done, perfectly happy to start in five minutes early.
Yeah, either way.
Okay. So let's see. Vanessa, were you going to start by reading out some of the ones that you caught or should we?
I'm sorry, I was going to do that in the break and I didn't.
Okay. Well, I, I remember two, two at least that I, that I mentioned.
Okay.
So one, one was the integration with the comp plan so-called, which really ought to be, the comp plan ought to, ought to drive the policy in this, this document. I, I mean, I think as a planning commission, that's, that's something, you know, that's the thing we would talk about. And then, and the whole issue about the, about the integrating of the modes and being, make more clear about how this framework that they laboriously lay out, what is that, how does that actually look like? What does that actually look like? And what are the, how are we going to manage these multi-layered arterials that are so much the source of the issue? Those are, those are together in my mind and top, top of mind for me. And then if I were, if I were allowed a third one, I would, I would ask for a separate vision zero element because I think, I think things like, for example, the safe routes to schools and parks that they're talking about and some of the, some of the actions that they would take. I, I just would like to see it pulled together somewhere where there is a comprehensive strategy that's driving a lot of the decision-making we're doing and what has, that has performance measures and targets associated with it. And so I just, I think without, without that level of focus, if it's, if it's kind of expected to be, you know, maybe in the pedestrian element or maybe in the public space element. I just think it gets, I think it gets lost or the accountability gets diffused. That's, that'd be my thinking.
Thanks, David. Just in quickly reviewing my notes, those are the ones that I flagged as well. There were also other, other comments that were more about, you know, stronger language or wording comments to be more actionable. And I see those as less issue-specific and those would probably follow under the, the big issues that you all are concerned about.
John, I don't know if you, in your notes have noted anything.
Those are, um, David's ideas are totally consistent with what I was seeing in my notes as well as the more actionable. I like the discussion of uh, we look forward to, or we recommend instead of just being negative. You're, you are lacking right now, or I don't see, or this is insufficient. I think we have opportunities to make it more.
I just came out of a training for supervisors on how to get feedback in performance reviews and they said, help them in sandwich and be specific and actual in your feedback, not just I don't like it when you do this thing. So, yes.
That's why Vanessa's the supervisor.
I think ours is a compliment open face.
I, I guess, I think one thing that's just sitting heavy with me is there's one I want to pull forward, but then when I look at the rest of the categories, I kind of am like, well, they're all my babies. I know all of these things are important, but climate change, climate resilience, like just seems like the big elephant in the room, right? Like that. If we're going to be successful in a thriving city, 50 years from now, we need a transportation network that is ahead of and catch, not, not catching up to the change, but leading the change and making it possible for the city to be a livable place. And so I, it just kind of feels to me like we should put a, if there are comments related to that and we're saying, these are the things that we're really leaning in on. I don't know.
No, I think that's a really good, I think, don't, don't dismiss yourself after you, after you just made a passionate statement like that. I think you, I think you're, you're on to something and I agree. I think we have the opportunity to do that.
Can I add one thing from the break in the room here? You may not have heard David, but the fact that it is not real searchable and does not have hyperlinks reduces the, its overall value. So maybe we can put it as a recommendation is make it fully searchable and get hyperlinks in there. So you have table of contents goes right to what you want. There's cross-referencing of sections and all that just makes the whole document more useful, means it's more likely to get used. That could be a comment from us.
That is a flashback from six or eight years ago of the compl- the last complaint.
And what they weren't able to do that?
That was a comment from the planning commission on the last version of the comprehensive plan was to include hyperlinks, include That was a comment from the planning commission on the last version of the comprehensive plan was to include hyperlinks, include the table of contents, so it went right to the section.
Good, so you've got language you don't need to.
They ignored it?
No, I'm, I'm just saying it's.
You've heard it before.
Yes, we, it's, but it's a great.
We had.
Yeah.
My impulse. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
As we said six years ago.
Well, that was to OPCV.
I mean, I, I do think the legibility of the plan and the usability of the planner, it's important and I think we should be flagging that. My impulse would be to put that toward the end of the document, you know, to have, to, to put our real, shine our laser light on the, on the big policy concerns we have and then, you know, farther down in the document to go over some of the things we think might make it more legible and usable. That's my thought anyway.
And Zio, do you?
Yeah. Yeah. I, I think folks in the ivory room feel comfortable combining five and seven as a top priority and saying that there needs to at least be a path forward for prioritization framework around the focuses on rational society. Like things should be prioritized by projects that have impact towards those goals.
I mean, I think the problem is the plan says that.
Yeah.
But then when they say what they're going to do about it, is they're going to co-create with community. And then I just, I'm like, what community?
It's not a prioritization.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they need to make it much more clear what, what it means to prioritize in terms of redressing past harms. And I, you know, I could suggest some things to them, you know, I don't think it's impossible to do. I think it's politically less easy. And so maybe that's something they want to sort of keep closer to the vest for now.
But if the plans makes it easier to figure out what to weigh in the decision making process, it's, it's important to understand that it's political and that the plan can play a role in articulating before things get specific. What matters to the decision makers and what matters to the community and what matters to the folks, the folks who are affected by this decision. So I understand it's political, but where, where we can use this as a tool to produce less political outcomes in the future or shift the dynamics of the politics, I think we should be cognizant of the power of a plan to do that and have discussions around that if we want to make it equitable.
Okay, so Rose, go ahead. Does it, I guess it goes to how we talk about when we call out prioritization at the top of our letter, how we talk about it?
Uh, well, I'm trying to figure out how to make our letter more actionable and I know that one of the things Estat stated in part one is that they wanted community feedback on prioritization. So I was wondering if maybe this group of brilliant minds can come up with what an actual policy language suggestion would be to replace co-create with community with something with more teeth? Like, what, what would we propose in place of that? And then maybe use the comment letter as a place to be like, we think that in order to achieve true equity and accountability, this is the type of prioritization framework policy language that you need.
Zio, I do not mean to put you on the spot. I know you're new, but I'm wondering if you have thoughts on that question, given that you kind of suggested that already.
Yeah, I'm, I'm having a little chance to read the entire.
Yeah.
Might answer a significant amount of, I didn't know what I had about. But like, we have access to transit networks and like social vulnerability. And we have the capacity to overlay them we have in other policy documents. And so could we look at places where there are significant transit deaths or transit deficits and target those neighborhoods for community co-creation? Like, is there a way to add, I think you pointed out earlier in the meeting that like they say, community co-creation, but they don't specify which communities. And so can we look at some of their value goals and be like, these specific places in the city need attention or care?
I like that idea. When I was reading the plan, I found that they use the word vulnerable communities a lot. And if you go through the definition, it's a catch-all for a lot of different groups and not all of those groups are place-based. So I'd want to think about language that captures like, you know, different disability communities and whatnot that are also sort of big users of the transit system and like, not always, we're not always designing a system that works well for them either.
All right. So queue being continued at our September 21st land use and transportation committee meeting. But now, has Radcliffe joined us?
I'm just looking.
I hope.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, hey, Radcliffe. Yeah, so we have Radcliffe, Zach and I from the Seattle Department of Transportation is here to provide an overview of the draft Seattle Transportation Plan's draft environmental impact statement. Following his presentation, I'll facilitate our discussion by first asking commissioners for any clarifying questions. If you do not have a question, feel free to pass and I will circle back to you at the end. End of the portion, the questions portion. And following the questions, we'll open the floor to comments. Staff will assist in monitoring the queue and ensuring all commissioners have the opportunity to participate in the discussion. We have 45 minutes for this item. Welcome, Radcliffe.
Thank you, John. Thank you again. Commission for having me. Last time I gave you an update on the draft Seattle Transportation Plan that was released. And then the following week, the draft EIS was released. I don't have a slide deck, but I'm happy to sort of walk through the document a little bit. So if that's okay, if I share my screen, would that be okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you.
Bear with me one moment here. It's not letting me do it. I think, John, do you have your screen?
Let me stop sharing and maybe.
Yes, I think that might work. If you stop sharing, then I can share.
If not, I can always share the DEIS and scroll through it for you.
I just have a couple of sites and queued up, but it's, if not, I can talk through it as well.
Proceed.
We can, oh, we can see, we can see your screen.
Done. I. Okay.
Now we see you. We, we could, there we go.
Okay, there we go. First, I want to say thanks for your interest in this. It's a big, long document. I want to go over a few logistics first of the comment period. And I'm sure you've all been able to access it, I hope. It's, it's buried in the, what is the environmental review process for the STP section? So it's at the very bottom of of the STP, S dot's STP website. But I think you've all hopefully been able to access the document. The main part of the document is 500-ish pages. And it's also got some appendices with lots of maps. We tried to, tried to make it more lean, but just the nature of these documents quite long. So we have a 45 day comment period ends October 16th. You can send all your comments to me. And those are the instructions that are in the document itself. Just sort of the very front part of the document. Just speaking to the process, what we're looking at and how to comment. And then gives an overview of the alternatives, but I think there's some charts in there as well. On page, section one, page 22. There was a question about what are we doing now, sort of, what is the baseline XX and what is the performance YY in the future? So there are a number of charts across the, the document where you can see that. But this is just, this page here gives you an overview of sort of what's the difference between the no action alternative, the moderate pace and, and rapid progress. And I might just jump to actual page 122. That's the first chart that shows sort of what are the difference between the alternatives? And then these alternatives, alternative one, alternative two, and alternative three take, are analyzed against the, the land use. That's the proposed alternative five land use. So previously, when I talked about the comp plans DEIS, we kept the transportation baseline, essentially the existing conditions of our transportation constant. That way we could see what's changing in the land use scenarios. This time around, we, we take a land use and keep that constant. So the alternative five of, of the comp plans proposed land use is the most intense land use. And we analyze it against, or we, we analyze the alternatives against that one land use. An alternative.
Real quick, sorry, could you zoom in a sminge? So I could read the. Thank you. That's great.
That's better. Great. So essentially, this, this gives you a, a picture of how the alternatives differ from sort of what we're calling the no action right now. And, and alternative two is intended to sort of be in this middle place, a, a moderate pace level of investment. And then alternative three, if you think of it as a bookend that goes all the way to sort of, if, if we did everything and possibly more. It's not to say that we're going to do alternative three, but it gives us a, a range and perhaps what is down the road. The, the set of projects that we do move forward with are somewhere in between. And then the analysis, knowing that it's somewhere in between, says it, it addresses the issues that have been analyzed in, in this environmental analysis. So any questions? Real quick on, on this chart of what's being looked at from a transportation perspective? And then just really quick, just, I don't have it here, but a summary essentially of the findings, you know, we're looking, the, the CIPA requires us to look at a, a number of elements from air quality to water resources, sea level rise and climate change. Looks at transportation noise and then impacts on land use patterns and also utilities. And the utilities part really was meant to track, would we be able to provide enough electricity? Or the conversion, or what we're looking at is conversion of, of our internal combustion engines, fleets to, and vehicles to electric vehicles. And the, the high level summary is that there, and this is going to sound weird here. There are no significant unavoidable adverse impacts that are anticipated. Any of the impacts that have been noted essentially are mitigatable. So this is the, the findings for each of these are, any, any impacts that are noted can be mitigated. So the, the final ultimate finding is that there are no significant unavoidable adverse impacts anticipated. So somewhere in between alternative two and alternative three, if there's a set of interventions that we select, they would meet that criteria. But I, I want to clarify, this is a, a non-project EIS. And that means the, the analysis is much more broad based. It's the, the numbers we look at are sort of order of magnitude. They're not very detailed compared to a, a project D, EIS. Any project down the road will still need to go through a D, an environmental impact statement and much more detailed look at what those impacts are on a number of issues, again, from air quality to, to noise, land use patterns, et cetera. The the document is very long. Like I said, it's 444 pages and each section has each, each section of from air quality to water resources. There's, there's a summary section of the, the impacts and mitigation measures. But then it goes into a fair amount of detail as well. And just scroll through it of what those are and a number of related maps to it as well. Let me just take one section, for example. So almost the, the first hundred pages becomes a, a broad summary of, of all of the, the work on. And then beginning in chapter three begins more of the detail of each of the sections. So from water resources, go in and it takes a look at the data and methods and what they're looking at. Gives a whole detail too of current policies and regulations. So in every chapter, there's just sort of bringing in all of sort of the context of what the, the regulatory frameworks are and then current conditions. And then how those can, what the potential impacts are. And then there are related charts throughout to sort of help with analysis to come up with what the impacts are at, again, at a very broad base level. So this is off, it's, it's, it's a bit different from project level EISs and then the, the the data that we're sometimes looking for, what it is today and what it might be in the future, isn't necessarily there all the time, but they do sort of show by sub area, sort of what the impacts are here and there. And then from that, the analysis team makes a determination of sort of what the level of impacts are and whether or not they're mitigatable. And through each element, as I'd mentioned, any of the impacts that are made can be mitigated. So it took me a little bit to, to understand, okay, what are the, you know, thinking that there would always be some kind of level of impact, but any of those impacts we can, we can address through whatever actions we do from a range from alternative two to to alternative three. Can I pause right here? Any questions so far? This document is, is very big and daunting to, to read through. And I'm happy to come back and also along the way, as you go through this, to answer any questions that you all might, might have. None so far. Okay. John, I wanted to, you know, use up as much of the time that we had as a part of conversation. And I was hearing some of the conversations you were all having. And, and how might some of that conversation now steer towards sort of the comments that you would provide? And then how that could be integrated into the existing plan as it relates to the EIS as well?
Right. Just for your, for your information, we are in the process of preparing separate comment letters, both one for the draft STP as well as one on the EIS. So, so a lot of the comments that you heard previously were on the outline that we've prepared for the draft STP. This is, this is actually the first overview the commissioners have received on the EIS. And we will be kicking off discussion of our staff draft outline for the DEIS comment letter early next week. So, so your overview at this point is really helpful. And we realize we're on a shorter timeline with the comment period, a shorter time comment period for the DIS than the STP. So but yeah, it's really helpful to have you available for questions and discussion at this time.
I'll also note if, given that the document is very big, you've also got the STP to look at. It would be fine to also make a comment that if there's an opportunity to extend, that's okay too. I think we're receiving some of that right now as well.
Thank you for that. I think there, there may be interest, but also realizing that we're on parallel tracks with review of both documents at the same time. There may be benefits for just getting them both done at the same time.
And one of these days, we'll get the comp plan. So from here, I guess we have an opportunity for folks to ask clarifying questions. Or I think it's fair game to ask other questions about how to attack this document. So in the order that we have here, Jamie would be first, if you have a question.
No questions.
Then Julio?
No.
Dalton?
Good for me. Thank you.
Michaela?
Yeah, I'm always interested in understanding the impacts to things that EISs are that are typically outside the scope of the EIS. For example, when we were trying to comment on Sound Transit's light rail extension, it was really hard to evaluate the impacts to the local, to CID, and in particular to the businesses. And there was a lot of great work done in a separate equity analysis that really felt like it should be in the EIS. So did you guys expand your scope in any way, shape or form to think through impacts to different vulnerable communities? Or was this, is this a pretty standard form of work?
Yeah, that is certainly out of scope of CIPA. And there, there's been a back and, there's been back and forth of, should we take a look at that? We were counseled that we need to stay within sort of what the rules are for an environmental impact statement, what the state law requires. Certainly, I think the sort of this equity analysis and impacts to businesses are very important. And that may have to be looked at separately as it's not required as part of CIPA regulation.
And it's a, it's a work product that's not currently funded or in your project timeline? Is that correct?
Yes, I don't believe it's funded or within the timeline. But that is something as part of STP, we're constantly talking about, thinking about. And this is why I think you hear this term co-create quite a bit. There, you know, when we go out to different communities, they have also different criteria that they want to look at. And the different sort of measures of success within different geographic, I would say, granularity is something for, say, South Seattle Rainier Valley might be different for this, different from the CID and might be slightly different from folks in Georgetown or South Park and Lake City. So I think there is a combination of work that's happening. It might not specifically be reported in the EIS. But we're certainly taking a look at what those impacts are at a broader level as part of the STP. And then also in working in partnership with our comp plan team as well.
Nick?
I had kind of a question on just the, the term impacts. And when you're looking at changes to the network, including adding additional multimodal connections, there would be potentially impact on like traffic operations in terms of the level of service. But is that something that this is looking at? Or how does it, I guess, look at the introduction of more bike lanes as of, what's the impact there? Like what's looked at? Because that might impact the level of service on traffic operations, or that's what it might disclose in the document. But it's kind of a bigger story to tell. So I'm curious how that tells that story.
I think we'll be seeing more of those figures in the, in the final EIS as well. But it's sort of chicken egg here of what we're looking at when we say, we want, for example, we would take a general purpose lane from traffic, say, there were two lanes in each direction. And we have policy in the STP that says, you know, we have to take a look at whether those two general purpose lanes need to be there. Could, in asking ourselves, could we take away a lane and repurpose it for, say, transit or for cycling? Certainly, if you did that, there is perception of an impact to drivers if the same amount of driving was the same. But that shift also creates a potential shift over to more people riding that transit or riding bikes. So there's sort of a canceling there. And I think it's better in video, we've got to do a better job at producing that of showing what that, how sometimes taking a lane for more efficient means of travel, moving people and goods either on transit or through cycling, smaller vehicle forms. Move the, the, the measure we would be looking at would be people throughput rather than vehicle throughput. So yes, there would be an impact on the car, but we are moving more people through that particular corridor. So, you know, if you're a car advocate, you're probably saying, yeah, there is, there is more impact to me as a driver. I may be in traffic a little bit more. So there is an impact, but that's all being mitigated by saying, well, we're moving more people through, through these other means. So that is going to be sort of, I think, a political conversation too of how much level of service is adjusted for different modes. But overall, what we're measuring from an environmental impact perspective is we're moving people through. So this is why it might seem that it would say, well, there isn't an impact because we're moving more people through a particular corridor. But at a detailed level, there's going to be impact on vehicles so that there's the benefit where more people being able to move through on transit or through bikes or what have you.
Rose?
Still thinking about stuff. Yep.
Kayla? Pass in Andy?
Yeah, one comment, I don't know if I'm out of line a little bit, but between, since we're reviewing two large documents, if there are concerns, does it make more sense to focus on the transportation plan itself rather than the environmental impact statement of the transportation plan in terms of how we spend our, our time in the nitty gritty detail? Does that make sense? So one seems directly on the plan itself, the other is a step removed from the plan. Are we better to work with extra energy on the plan itself?
I, I think the, the plan itself is a document that's going to have much more visibility for our decision makers. The EIS is a very broad stroke look at making sure that there aren't any sort of, I would say, issues that couldn't be fixed, couldn't be mitigated from the analysis. I mean, it's a big document. Generally, any of the impacts that do come through have mitigations. And not all the mitigate, and that's going to be the thing. What are the mitigations that we can agree on? But there are definitely things that we can do to address any of the impacts that, that would be coming with, with growth and with the transportation proposals that are being made. And I think the mitigations that were, that are all being talked about are all the things that we've heard from the community that, that they would want to see, to improve equity, to improve safety, and to improve our work on climate action. So we're trying to connect all of them. And at the same time, to addressing issues related with the partner effort on the land use side of affordability, compactness of the city. So this is sort of, begins to point us in a direction of, well, if we want to get the best bang for our investments and for the combination of investments, we can do that by the combination of investments mitigations that we'll see created by the impacts of, of growth and also some of the investments that we do propose.
Zio?
Oh, pass.
I have a question. I'm just kind of curious. I haven't had a chance to spend a lot of time with this yet, but I'm curious Radcliffe, if there are things that jumped out that were just interesting in all of these analyses? Like, for example, were there any around climate, were there any insights or you know, illustrations of the power of certain actions or anything like that that you, that you might note?
I, I would say in the, the sea level rise piece, and I think there's a lot of nuance in how we, we look at sea level rise maps. Could, you know, in a, in a more, in a warmer climate, and we continue to do the things that we do, the impacts that would happen in the Duamish Valley. So, you know, looking at the analysis in that particular area, we know there are places that are vulnerable. Would we address them so that, you know, we stay out of harms way? Or are we going to be accepting that there's going to be harm? But we need to be able to design resilient infrastructure, even resilient ways of coming back after, say, a storm surge, et cetera. So I, I think that becomes some things for, and I overheard all you, it becomes political here of, to what degree do we respond to situations that we know are likely to, to occur, given a warming climate? For example, do we put up more sea, do we really, you know, put up more seawalls where we know? And to what height do we put them at? You know, you, that has an impact too, to some degree of, well, we're, we're building a mitigation for, you know, the worst possible scenario. But maybe that doesn't happen, the worst situation does, is a could happen. So it's finding that balance of, of what are the mitigations to address the, the possible impacts, especially related to storms, storm surge and, in, in the Duamish Valley?
Fascinating. So if there, if there aren't any other questions, then we would go on to comments. And if you have a comment, pop your name in the chat. We don't have comments, then I guess we'll let staff wrap us up with our next steps on this.
And, and if I may add one more thing, I know it's a, a big document. I've scanned through it a number of times and it's still a difficult document for me to completely process. So I don't expect anyone reading it for the first time to totally get it. So if you have any questions at all, do feel free to reach out to me. And I'm happy to try and answer as best I can. And if you do need me to come back and also address a particular topic in the DEIS, if that's something that you're interested in to do as a group, I'm happy to do that as well.
Thanks very much. Appreciate that offer. Last call for, for any comments or, or other questions? Sounds like we've absorbed all we're going to absorb for today. So John, are you, are you wrapping us up here?
Vanessa, do you want to do it?
Okay. I have the timeline in front of me, but, and then we can approve the minutes before we adjourn.
Oh, yeah. So thanks Radcliffe for joining us. So the next steps on the draft EIS are next Tuesday, we will be presenting a draft, staff draft outline of the comment letter.
Not so much outline as staff, staff draft comments.
Staff draft comments.
Certain things that, yeah, Olivia and I have debated up and I'm actually not going to be here next week. So Olivia has graciously accepted to leave that discussion.
So this will sort of be your, your observations on going through the document, kind of not, not necessarily organized or anything at this point, but just what you, what you're seeing?
Issue identification, maybe, or things we think you all might be interested in learning a little more about or dive into.
Super helpful. Thank you.
Michaela has a question. Michaela has a question, dude.
Go ahead.
To what extent do you want us to have read any bit of the plan and come prepared with comments? Is that necessary? Or are you presenting to us to generate, to get us excited and motivated to read it after this meeting? Well, I'd say, given our timeline, between Tuesday, when I'll be talking about maybe some staff comments about the DAS, and then Thursday, where we'll be talking about the outline, and then the following week, we'll be talking about the draft. There's not a lot of rebound time there. So I think, you know, your mileage will vary based on your current availability. But if you plan to look at it at all, you might want to do this sooner rather than later. And I think a good piece to look at is something that Brad has already pointed out is that chart on page, I think it was 122, that shows sort of a breakdown between all the alternatives and at high level overview of how to compare them all. That was a good one to find out.
and at high level overview, how to compare them all. That was a good one to find out.
Go ahead.
If I may suggest, I I would, you know, and I know everyone's got a limited time, I would steep yourselves in chapter one. That has a lot of the summary of of what's in the subsequent chapters of chapter two and and chapter three. Chapter two and chapter three are just very detailed aspects of that. And if there's something that you want to dive into, then I would say dive into chapter three, once you felt comfortable with chapter one.
How, one more question, how robust are the appendices and should we be reading those?
The appendices were an attempt to lighten this 440 page document. I had mentioned it was over 500 pages. And so this is where the appendices come in, where there are a number of maps in there. So it's almost really just a reference. And there is some bit in the appendices, too, that that tries to speak to the equity piece. But it does it, I would say it's more of a light touch, since it's not, again, a requirement of of CEPA regulation.
Again, thank you so much, Radcliffe, for being here for your multiple appearances and spending so much time with us. We really, we really do appreciate it. So I think thank you so much. And so I think, Steph, we can go ahead and go to the minutes if there's nothing else to be done to wrap that part up.
David, if I could just
Yeah.
Brad, but thank you so much. If I could just not all commissioners may have heard this, but given the compressed timeline that you see on the slide before you, what I proposed a couple of weeks ago is that staff would take the lead on an initial cut of the draft EIS and really encourage commissioners to choose what parts of the draft STP speak to them or that they're concerned about, or they're interested in, or they're subject matter experts. And we will, so staff will be more of a support role in your comments and developing your comments on the plan itself. And we'll and we're so, to put it more succinctly, my suggestion is that the commissioners really prioritize review of the plan. And staff will take a first run at the draft DIS to either identify areas that jump out at us or where we see red flags or comments that are in keeping with the purview of the commission and topics we you all have brought up before.
That makes very good sense to me. I appreciate that. Okay. I would like to entertain a motion to adopt the minutes in a second.
Rose's motion.
Rose and Jamie?
Jamie's second.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody have any amendments, comments on the notes? The minutes? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor of approving the minutes from our last minute, last minute, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say no. Any abstentions? Chair votes aye. We've adopted the minutes. Super. Anyone showed up to make comments or any other commission business?
Sorry, I could keep interjecting here, David. I just want to, because Dalton is with us now. Thank Dalton for his fantastic year of service as our Get Engaged member. We really appreciated you being actively involved, showing up, speaking up. You're a great model. And you are meeting Zio, our new Get Engaged member. And I will just note that the commission has a long history or a history, I should say, of availing ourselves of our Get Engaged members. And in fact, Caleb is a previous Get Engaged member, as is Lauren Squires, who's unfortunately home with a flu. Previous commissioners include Michael Austin and Amalia Layton, both who ended up being chair of the commission who started out as Get Engaged. So we love this program and we're very appreciative of the time you take and your involvement. And I'll miss you, Dalton, but we're not saying goodbye. We're saying see you next time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We will see you again, I'm sure. Thanks a lot for spending the time with us. It's been really nice. And I hope you do come back. Let's see, anything else that we should take care of today? All right. And I guess we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, all. Thanks, David.
Take care.
Everyone.
Bye.